All right. Ms. Gore, do we have any citizens' comments?
I do not have any yet.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the October 23, 2018 Agenda?
I'm so mad that we have the Agenda.
It's been moved by Ms. Fletcher and seconded by Mr. Benjamin to approve the October 23, 2018 Agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it, the motions carried. All right, we will move on to Chairman's report. I have a short report here. First of all, I want to thank everybody for participating in our school board self-evaluation, and I will be scoring those and comparing those to our last self-evaluation that we had. I will be compiling those scores, and we will be finding out what our highest performance scores are and what our lowest performance scores are. And we'll also find out what some of our strengths and weaknesses that we think we may need to improve upon. So I will compile those scores and get those back and report on those at our next meeting. So thank you again for participating. Also, I wanted to share with you, just in case, the school board academies by date, so you can start looking at these. This is just kind of a quick little sheet here, check sheet, that you can use and make sure that you know when the school board academies are and where and when. And I hope that's, I hope you find that helpful by date. Also, since we are approaching quickly our Tennessee School Board Association Conference, I want to remind everyone that casual dress is appropriate for the conference except on Saturday. At 4:45 to 6 o'clock is the awards reception and ceremony, and the, at that ceremony or at that program, it is asked that we have Sunday dress. Sunday dress would be appropriate for that particular portion of the conference.
Madam Chairman, is that Sunday dress at Refuge or Sunday dress?
I knew somebody was going to ask me that. And I knew it was going to be Mr. Benjamin. Now, here's the deal. I am not going to describe that, what Sunday dress is at Refuge or wherever. I'm going to let you use your own good judgment and decide on what is appropriate for the reception.
I'll say Mr. Benjamin always looks good.
But I do understand the question, Mr. Benjamin, I do understand. Okay. Friday, November the 2nd is the day for boards to show their school system pride, and we've had a little problem, not with showing our pride, we have great pride. Our school board has great pride in our school system, let me just say that right away. But we should be wearing matching shirts or matching jackets if we can on that Friday, November the 2nd. Problem is, some of us, we don't match. But at any rate, Mr. Lamar is modeling tonight, our blazer that we all have, so maybe we should, casual attire will not be appropriate for parties on Friday, because if we all wear our blazers, that will be, we'll look pretty good. But at any rate, just wanted to make sure you knew about that also. And also, please don't forget that I have arranged for us to have dinner together as a group, and have invited Ms. Speikman, as well as, of course, Superintendent Mason and Mr. Jeff Mayo to join us on Friday night at 6:30, and we will be having dinner at Cascades. And I look forward to having a little fellowship and time with all of you, so I think that'll be a good night on Friday. Well, we have a birthday coming up. It has not passed us yet, and I'm sure she's like me, she probably doesn't want me to even talk about it, but at any rate, Ms. Barbara Fletcher is having a birthday on November the 9th, so Ms. Fletcher, we wish you a very happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Ms. Fletcher.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Also, I think, looking at our self-evaluation and all the things that we need to talk about for evaluation, or as we look at that, it reminded me of something that I just wanted to make public, because I have never said this before. And I wanted to say that in our four and a half years as a school system, I started thinking back at the beginning. And I remember, the first thing, of course, what we did was hire our superintendent, Superintendent Mason. And then Superintendent Mason chose someone to be her chief of staff, Mr. Jeff Mayo. These two people, I have never thanked publicly and said how much we appreciate all that they have done to make this school system the very best. I know we're coming up on our fifth year, and I got very nostalgic, I guess, about it, and thinking how much work these two put in in forming our system. They are like the founders. Yes, we were there before Ms. Mason, because we hired Ms. Mason, and Ms. Mason hired Mr. Mayo, but I'll tell you this, they did the hard work. They did all the work. We gave this our support as much as we could. But these two really did the heavy lifting and really formed our school system. And I just wanted to publicly thank them, and I think we just need to give them a standing ovation tonight. I really do. I hope I didn't embarrass anybody, but I just had to speak from my heart on that one. They, these two people have just been amazing. All right. Now, I believe that is the end of the Chairman's report, and we are going to move on to Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. I've just got a note, and it looks like we have one more person that we need to recognize. Is it Ms. Penny? Do we have a certificate?
We do.
Oh. Our AP Scholars, AP Scholars of Honor, that's our grand Hutchins.
I have to say, I know, I know Mr. Hutchins' grandparents. I'm just so glad they're here, and they're just wonderful people. Sylvia was my room mother when I was teaching 4th grade. So, hey, let me tell you, and is this Brent's wife?
Yes, it is. I married Jeff.
Oh, you married Jeff? Okay, well, I like Jeff too, so I, that's great. Thank y'all, thank y'all so much.
I just have a couple items tonight. First, I want to update the board on tennis courts. The, the town of Arlington, Mayor and Alderman awarded the contract for the construction of the tennis courts, so we should start seeing some activity over there. We have been, Ms. Speikman has been working with Mr. Lawson on completing an MOU, and we were notified today that the plan is, is that the MOU will go before the town at their next meeting in, in a couple weeks, I guess, next week maybe. And so I just wanted to let you know that we have got that process completed, and really happy to be partnering with the town in this endeavor. Couple other quick things. Had a real great meeting at Wright Medical last Thursday for Manufacturing Day. We have, for the last two years, gone to Microport, Wright opened their doors for us, and also for Bartlett and Bolton and Fayette County, and it was a fabulous day. The kids, our kids learned a lot, and really looking forward to our future work with them. Also, the ACS PTA Council just announced today over $7,620 worth of teacher grants that they awarded through their work in fundraising. There were a total of 11 awards spread across all four schools. And then, the last thing that I have before I call Mr. Hill up, is that you all are aware of Donaldson being a blue ribbon. We will, there'll be a group of us going to Washington DC on November 7th and 8th to get that award, to bring back to Arlington. The folks that will be going, representing the, the school district, will be, obviously be Ms. Davidson as the principal during the time of the application and the award. Dr. Hoda, Ms. Brenda Johnson, who is the counselor, will serve as a representative of the staff, and then, of course, myself. And Mr. Hill will be going to document it for, for, to share for y'all that whole process and the receiving of those awards. So we will be doing that in the next couple weeks, really happy about that. And with that, Mr. Hill, would you come up? We are ready to officially unveil our new logo. Before we put this out, we wanted the board to preview it first. You may have seen, you've seen some teasers out there, you've seen the logo out there, but wanted to share with you all what the official release will be. I'm glad we've got some kids here. I'm anxious to see their reactions.
So just to preview this real quick, so with unveiling the logo, we wanted to do more than just kind of, you know, put the logo out there. We wanted to tell our story. So you know I like to do videos, so we wrote a script that kind of speaks to ACS and who we are, and we actually had some student voice-overs for the video. I was going to tell you some of the students, and the names went away. Hold one second. So we had three students from the high school doing the voice-overs. We had Joshua Jones, he's a football player. We also had Noah Stoman and Abigail Martin, they are students in our Pape Academy. And then we also had three middle school students, Bree Alvarado, Mallory Crocker, Drew Benjamin, and Connor Hall. So you'll hear their voices in this video.
It's here, our Arlington Community Schools.
Where we thrive on creativity. We take the scattered pieces.
To build something great. We work together to challenge ourselves. And each other, to find who we are and who we want to be.
We rely on technology to learn where we came from.
To see where we're going. We adapt.
Because we know there's a world of opportunity for all.
We thrive under pressure.
To make our future great.
We are Arlington. To create.
Achieve.
So that is the video that we're unveiling on social media, just to kind of introduce the new logo to the community and to the ACS family.
Love it.
Awesome. Let me pull up one more thing that we wanted to go over. And, and one of the things that I'm making sure that people know on, on, on social media and up and through our website, is that this is not replacing the, kind of iconic, the A Tiger logo that is used for athletics. This is obviously replacing our district logo, and so we'll have, we'll have the two. All right, and the other thing that we wanted to go over, what, part of the Strategic Plan Committee, that was, or one of the things that was brought up during the Strategic Plan Committee, was to create branding guidelines for the district, specifically with the new logo that we created, just to make sure that it's using, that it's being used correctly throughout the district. So we do have that. You have packets that are printed out for you. Don't pay attention to the colors, the printer messed up a bit, so that, that's not the true colors. You can look at the screen for that. But I'll just quickly go through this packet. Again, this is just, this will live on our website, and will also be given to all employees, anyone who wants to use the logo, just to make sure that they're following the guidelines and that visual identity that we put forth. So just to go through it real quickly, we have the primary district logo, which you'll see is the horizontal logo. This is the primary one, this is the one that you'll see most likely. I'll let our heads and official documents and that sort of thing. We also have another version, because sometimes the horizontal version just doesn't work for the particular document that you're working with, so we have the vertical version. And this would be great on brochures and flyers and that sort of thing. So this just tells you how to use that. We also have some secondary district logos, so what I'm calling the circle or the seal, that would be nice on a T-shirt or any kind of other, any other use that you would need a, a seal version for. And then, of course, we also have the icon only, because that is the point, we wanted a symbol or an icon that could stand alone over time, so it was important that we had that piece as well. We also have the reverse out options, so sometimes you need it on a dark background, so we have that white version that looks really good. And this will actually, this version will be used on the school security officers' uniforms. It'll be that white version, because it's going to be on a darker polo, so it's going to look really nice on that. And then we also have school site-specific versions of it. Again, we were relying on that icon and that symbol to last over time, so the symbol stays the same throughout the, all of them, but you'll see the individual school names on them as well. And then we also, in this visual identity and style guide, we go over logo size, so which size they should be. Obviously, if you get too small, you won't be able to read it, so we want to make sure that people are using it correctly and sizing it correctly. So this guide goes over that for all three of the logos. And then we also go over scaling, just talking about how you should and should not scale, because obviously we don't want it crunched, we don't want it too stretched out, again, because it's all going back to that visibility and making sure that you can see the logo and you can understand what it is. And then we also go over font colors, because there are specific colors associated with this logo, so it just goes over the different codes and things you would need for that. And then you find with your file format. So that is our visual identity and style guide, again, just to help people and make sure that they're using the logo correctly.
Tyler, do you want to take a minute to share a little bit about what the introduction, the, to explain where that came from and the second, the symbolism of the, the new A?
Yes, absolutely. And I actually timed it, so during this meeting, it would be live on the website. And so that, that's already on the website, and then I believe I pass out articles for each of you. But one of the things that was important regarding why we would get rid of the logo that's behind you, was that it's, we pride ourselves in ACS of being a one-to-one district, and the kind of icon of that particular logo was in the O, which relied heavily on a book. And obviously, that doesn't speak to the technology that we're, that we're introducing, since we are one-to-one with iPad technology, so it was important to get away from that. But also, the other thing was just to have an icon and a symbol that can last over time. And so with the star, it means a couple things, obviously. It's a dual meaning, so there's a A hidden within a star. And we really truly believe that our, our students are always reaching for the stars, they're also, they're always going past that. Our achievements in ACS are consistently speaking to that, that our students are, are doing wonders in this region and statewide. We have Donaldson, they're competing nationally with the blue ribbon. We consistently have schools being named reward schools. So time after time, we are proving to Tennessee and the region and the country that we are one of the top districts, and we are what, we are a model for what publication, education can and should be like. So I think a star representing Arlington is great, and then again, you have that A hidden in there, so, which obviously stands for Arlington. So those are just some of the reasons. But like I said, we, we really wanted to help the community understand this, so we put the video out. Again, it tells our story, we put the article out that also explains it in detail as well.
Thank you, thank you, Tyler. Thank you for your work on this and leading us to where we are now. I think that I've got, I've gotten rave reviews on the little teasers that's been out there so far, so thank you for your work, and your committee as well.
Thank you. Yes.
And with that, that concludes Superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mason. Ms. Speikman, General Counsel report?
Nothing, Ms. Penny.
Ms. Roberts, financial report?
The August 2018 financial report, general fund revenues at $3 million, expenditures at $4.3 million. The nutrition fund revenue $78,322, expenditures $75,473. Federal and discretionary grant funds, revenues $207,325, expenditures $214,814. And the reason that's, the revenue's a little bit lower, is we had a cap on one of the grants as to how much of a reimbursement we could request, and so in a couple of months, we'll be able to request the additional expenditures to cash that up, so that it'll match. In the CIP fund, we have expenditures of $157,828, and that's primarily for the middle school roofing project. The interlocal health benefits plan trust report, as of August 2018, year-to-date revenues of $4 million, year-to-date expenses of $4.4 million, a beginning balance of $1.8 million with an ending balance of $1.4 million. That concludes the financial report.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Roberts. TLN report, Dr. Beaus.
So Chairman, do you want, we're going to vote on the legislative agenda. Would you like me to go ahead and do all that now, or just do it like as the voting item?
Let's just wait for the voting item.
Yes, ma'am.
That's okay with you?
Yes, ma'am, no, perfect.
That's great. Well, thank you, Dr. Beaus. All right, let's move on to the consent agendas or a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
So moved. Tag it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agendas. Are there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it, the motion's carried. Okay, Superintendent Mason, will you lead us through our budget amendments and recommended action items on the agenda?
Yes, the first item that we have is our, the Resolution 2018-18. That is the amended, to amend the budget. That item, you will see, moves money from judgments to other contracted services, and that is to remove the current sign out front of Arlington Middle and take out the Bobcats to put in the New Arlington Tigers.
Nice.
So, so that, that's what that money will go for, so we're excited about that. Mr. Ruff has the plans ready, and the people on standby. I know, Mr. Benjamin, you're excited about that.
I am, yes, I am.
Ready to be a Tiger.
Yes.
With that, I recommend that the board approve Resolution 2018-18.
All right, you've heard the Superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
One second.
It's been moved by Mr. Benjamin, seconded by Ms. Fletcher. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it, the motion's carried. Ready for the business items?
I don't know, Ms. Williams, if you want to do 10A, I'll be, I'll be happy to, to talk about that. Ms. Williams and I have worked together to develop the, the Superintendent's evaluation tool. This, I know Ms. Williams has had the opportunity to speak to each of you, and I have as well, and we think that this reflects the, the needs of the board and the needs to accurately to assess the Superintendent. So with that, my, I'll make the recommendation to approve Superintendent's evaluation tool.
Thank you, Superintendent Mason. You've heard the Superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it, the motion's carried.
Our next item on the agenda, item 10B, is the recommendation to award the bid for the audiovisual gymnasium system equipment for the AMS new gymnasium to Memphis Communications Corporation in the amount of $112,000, $112,37.78. This will, we put this out to bid, we actually had seven or eight folks bid on it, and the Memphis Communication was the lowest bid by $8,000. Mr. Ruff and Ms. Speikman went through and betted the company, and so we think it's a good deal, and we're really excited about the sound that, that we're going to have at the middle school. It's going to be a quality sound. You know, most gyms you go to, you hear wah-wah-wah, you're not going to hear that, I think, with the quality that Mr. Ruff and his staff, working with our architect, has put together. So with that, I'd recommend approval of this contract.
All right, do we hear a motion to approve?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure, of course.
So do we know, obviously you do, where have they put stuff in like this before? That was my only question about them.
Where, this particular one?
This particular company, yeah.
Mr. Ruff and Ms. Speikman, I know, Mr. Ruff, can you speak to the, who else have these folks done work for?
Oh, they, Black Church, North Point, North Port, Amity, they've done quite a few places right now.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Some larger facilities.
Good.
All right, is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Tag it.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it, the motion is carried.
The next item, I will defer to Mr. Beaus for the approval of the legislative agenda.
Awesome. So you guys all, you guys all got a copy of this, and I love the little handout folder thing, that is just really, really handy. As the board knows, in particular Chairman Williams and Ms. Fletcher, we were kind of at the forefront of this legislative thing. We, we immediately developed relationships with our legislators, and it's allowed us to do a lot. I really believe, as, as a board member, I think it's really, really one of the absolutely most important things that we can do. So, put it out there to the board members and the Superintendent and General Counsel, and we all got together last week prior to a meeting with the Chairman and, and came up with this. She approved it, and so what you see before you is the culmination of all of that. I'm not going to read it to you, you guys have all seen it. Of paramount importance was to get everything that General Counsel thought was important, everything the Superintendent felt was important, and then obviously what the board felt was important. And I have a couple of them that, that I just want to highlight. The, the nurse-to-student ratio is something that's not going away. It started a few years ago, and it's come back around, and they're going to, they're going to change these ratios, and the problem is, they're not going to give any money for that. And so that's going to be something that we need to harp on. We're all for it, we need, we need those nurses, and if you look at how many encounters the school nurses have, and what a valuable job. I mean, the originally, school nurse was originally manufactured as a position to decrease absenteeism and increase productivity, and I think the science is, I think it was sometime in the 20s when this all started, like 1920s. So it's been around a long time, that's one thing.
And if I can interject currently with the current funding, the, through the BEP formula, the state pays for one and a half nurses we employ for.
And, and if you guys remember, Chairman Williams and Ms. Fletcher, the first year we went with just three nurses. And so the elementary school split one, and we were just fortunate enough to, to be able to, to hire another one. But, but there's a significant amount of encounters throughout the year, so that's one. Obviously, the top of the second page, this is huge, they, it's, it should be on every TLN agenda, it should be on every school board's agenda, no more unfunded mandates. They just can't keep mandating stuff and not, and not paying for it. The amount of hours, just even on the accountability stuff, is staggering, and that's all stuff they've mandated and not paid for, so that should always be something that we harp on.
Excuse me, Dr. Beaus, I just have to say, I have to agree with Dr. Beaus, so this is so important. This is absurd, how we have all these mandates and none of them, you know, a majority of them are not funded, just like.
Or, or underfunded.
Or underfunded, exactly. So it's ridiculous. So I was, this was one that I wanted to make sure we had on our legislative agenda, and I'm really glad that it's there.
Awesome. And, and then last one, Elise, and I'll, again, let you, some of these were kind of specific to us, and I know the Superintendent was passionate about the disposal, and, and General Counsel had both talked about disposing of surplus property. The way, the way that you have to go about that is just patently ridiculous, so hopefully we can get, get that changed. The last thing, I think, that, that I really didn't know a lot about, and I was recently educated on the portfolio system, and so this is going to be something that I'm passionate about, it's the last one. There's got to be a better method for evaluating teachers and non-tested subjects and grade levels, and, and so I encourage all of you guys to, to learn more about that portfolio. I, I had no idea it was in the shape it was in, so I'm glad it's on our agenda. But all of them are important, I think all of them are, are great. It's a special shout-out to General Counsel and her office. This looks amazing, and I think this is going to be easy to, to sell. So I'm, I'm going to charge all of our board members with going out and selling this stuff to the, to the right people. So, was there any questions about any of that, or?
Very nice work.
Well, very nice work for Ms. Speikman, so.
I did have one thing.
Absolutely. Ms. Speaker?
The, the reason that you all decided to, to make the move to adopt the legislative agenda at this meeting, rather than, you know, like in January when we've historically done it, is to give you guys an opportunity to advocate for this particular agenda at the TSBA meeting in a couple of weeks. So there's a specific, there are two specific forums for you to do that, and we, I would just encourage you to be sure that you're, you're in attendance at those and that you advocate for your own agenda at that, so that TSBA adopts it, because there are only lobbyists, or there are only formal lobbyists right now who's in Nashville during the legislative session, so we're going to be relying heavily upon them to push this agenda for us, so if it doesn't get on their agenda, we, we don't get too much juice, so.
What are the days and times of these meetings? Do you have those at hand?
I don't have them with me. I know, I can shoot you an email. I know that one of them is, is on Friday, because it's at the same time as my legal seminar I have to go to.
I see.
So that, that's why I wanted you guys to be sure and go, because I can't be there, so.
Put a red flag up, so we'll know which one it is.
Yes, sir, I sure will, uh-huh.
I also want to add, if I may, Chairman, Ms. Chairman, that you will see with your packet of that, Ms. Speikman has gone through on five of the agenda items and has, and has written suggested legislation for those items. That's a good thing to use, to get the ball rolling.
And so, the way it works is that you submit these things to the TSBA, and the board of directors votes on it, which we, which we did last time I was there, and then, it goes before us as a body at the delegate assembly. And so, what General Counsel's done, which is really nice, is she's taking all of the legwork out of it for them. She literally is handing it to them and saying, hey, all you got to do is put this up and let people vote. So, it's a big deal, and we appreciate that. It was nice.
Yeah, absolutely. That's very helpful.
One other thing I did want to say is to thank you to my assistant, Glenda. She actually is the one who made that pretty. And then, also, to my colleagues, the directors and Mr. Mayo all really jumped in this time to be a part of this cumulative effort, and it makes it a lot more wholesome, I think, for all of us to be involved, so thank you for your help.
So, with that, it is my recommendation for the board to approve Resolution 2018-19 to adopt the legislative agenda for 2019.
Make that motion.
That's seconded.
Is there any discussion? Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion's carried.
One question, we still have the meeting in January we've already had?
Yes.
Does that still take place?
We'll have the legislative coffee in January, and we usually, you know, I think it's great that we have done this legislative agenda now, but we have always done it usually in November. And so, you know, I still feel like, to be honest with you, when we would meet with the municipalities, even in January, when it was occurring in another district, the legislative coffee, we were always the only one who had a legislative agenda read at that breakfast. So, you know, I have to say that I think we really have taken this seriously and tried to make sure we're ahead of the game, so that's a good thing. But yes, in January, we'll still have that. I was looking recently, the General Assembly convenes January the 8th, so we'd have to have it before that, but certainly not at Christmas time, we don't want to do that, but it will be in January, but it will be before January the 8th, I guarantee that. So, I'll keep you posted on that.
Of course, this time, with Mark Norris leaving, we'll have a new state senator, and we'll have a new District 99, so both of those people in our district will be new.
You're right.
So, we want to kind of get with them.
You're so right.
It's important to get ahold of them before they go.
You are so right. So right. All right, are we ready to move on?
Yes. And our last time on the agenda, item 10D, Resolution 2018-20. This is to amend the 2018-19 fee school schedule, and if you've had the chance to look through that, these are our next set of field trips that, from all four of our schools, you will see the majority of these are what supports our fine arts programs, through our music and our art programs. So, with that, my recommendation is to approve 2018-19, amending the field, or amending the school fee schedule.
You heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion is carried. All right, we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. It's a meeting. To adjourn our meeting, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, our meeting is adjourned.